Okay, Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. This evening, the invocation will be given by Commissioner Fairchild. Got to hit this.
Will you pray for me? Gracious One, pour out Your Spirit upon us. Give us Your wisdom and Your guidance. Lead us so that we make decisions for the well-being of our citizens. Encourage us to be brave in our decision-making and lead us in ways that foster a community that brings prosperity to all and well-being for all. We ask this in Your precious name.
Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America and the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Kamis Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloughs.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion then to approve the absence of Commissioner Joseph?
So moved. Second the motion, Your Honor.
It's been probably moved in Senate to approve the absence of Commissioner Joseph. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. May I have a motion then also to approve the minutes from the June 5th meeting, 2024?
So moved. Second the motion.
Okay. It's been probably moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the June 5th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay. Ms. Blackshear, do we have any communications or petitions?
All have been distributed, Your Honor.
Okay. Since we have a presentation this evening and we have a special guest, and I'd like to invite to the podium Ms. Macy Hudson. And whilst she'll coming to the podium, Ms. Hudson is a 2017 graduate of the Stivers School for the Arts. You may please, as you practice your walk, okay? I understand how you got that award. So she is, of course, a graduate of the Stivers. She also was crowned Miss Ohio for 2024. This past Saturday, or not this past Saturday, but May 25th, at the Shawnee State University Vern Rife Center for the Arts in Portsmouth, Ohio. And Ms. Hudson will now be competing in California, all right? And is a pageant to represent us sometime, I believe, in August?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm sure my Commissioners have some thoughts. First of all, congratulations for you.
Thank you so much.
Okay? And then I'd like to have you tell us a little bit about your experience.
Yes, of course. It's so good to be here. Thank you so much for having me, first of all. I'm so grateful to be from Dayton. This is where it all began and most certainly the reason why I've been able to chase these dreams in the way that I have is because of where I came from. Starting out, going to Dayton Public Schools, Valerie Elementary, then going to Stivers School for the Arts. You know, it's a beautiful background and I'm just so grateful. But being able to, you know, go forth and go to this pageant and represent Dayton is so exciting for me. I'm excited to be an advocate and just do what I can for this city and be the best representative that I can.
Okay. All right. So did you wear that red dress as part of your award-winning appetite? Not appetite, but wardrobe?
Well, I love red and, you know, Ohio, so I had to put on some red for you guys today.
Happens to be my favorite color.
Oh, nice. So I did it just for you then.
All right. Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Turner Sloughs, I know she has some words, wisdom to share with you.
I like red too.
Ooh, yes.
Delta. But congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here this evening. And again, I just want to echo the Mayor's comments. We're very proud of you. Also, Stivers making headlines with you again being a graduate. And Stivers was also listed as one of the Ohio top, 100 top schools in Ohio, so yes. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Fairchild.
Yeah. Well, you know, the question that every Stivers student gets, what was your magnet or magnets?
Yes, I did violin and dance.
Okay, very well. And was that part of your, in presenting yourself in the Miss Ohio contest, was that part?
Yeah, so I didn't actually have to perform in this contest, but it always is a driving thing for me, being from the arts and letting my creativity show through that and the discipline that I learned from being in dance and violin definitely brought me to where I am right now, for sure.
So you have two parents of students who are currently at Stivers here at the commission, Commissioner Turner Sloughs and myself, so.
Yes.
Thank you for paving the way.
Of course. Go Tigers.
And then you.
Three.
Three?
Three.
Oh, your grand.
My daughter was there.
Your daughter's there now?
Not now, but.
Oh, okay.
Alumni.
Okay, alumni, all right.
Not now.
And so now the question portion of your time here with us, what advice would you give to a current 14-year-old young student at Stivers?
Oh, I would tell them to never give up. I would tell them to take everything that they're learning and, you know, apply it to whatever it is that they are wanting to do in the future. Like I said, being in dance and violin, while it was an amazing thing, I really took away the discipline and the creativity and learning to be on a team, learning to put my best face forward and give my best performance, which is our Stivers motto. So now I put that with everything that I do. And that's why I even became Miss Ohio is because every day I'm trying to give my best performance, serve as many people as I can, just do the best that I can so I can represent myself and represent the community. So I would tell them to never give up, dream as big as possible because you can come from Dayton, you can, you know, this amazing city, and you can do some pretty big things.
Awesome. Well, again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
My daughter was in the pageant world for many, many years.
Yes.
I understand what it takes to rise to this level. She certainly never made it that far, but really appreciate you for representing us and good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So one of the things that you're currently doing right now, you are an account executive?
Yeah, so that actually, it's funny because that actually was my most previous job, but I am still working in fashion. And now I'm getting ready to start at the Ohio State University and getting my MBA. So I'm very excited about that next chapter as well.
Okay.
Yes.
So you have some other passions as well in representing your sister, working with those individuals who have blood disorders?
Yes.
Would you talk about that just for a moment as well?
Yes, absolutely. So we lost my oldest sister, Mariah, in 2021 unexpectedly, and she had a rare blood disorder. So in trying to process that grief, I really wanted to do something that could help other people and turn that pain into something that would be purposeful and let her legacy live on. So I created the initiative 518 for Life, and it's an initiative to bring awareness to rare blood disorders like hers and to share the importance of blood donation. So I have hosted two very successful blood drives so far. Both have been predominantly African-American, which is so important because it's important for there to be a diverse blood supply so the patients in need can get the best blood possible and not have any complications. So being able to host those is amazing. You know, in the past, there's been only like 3% African-American blood being donated. And at my blood drives, we've had over 50%. And so it's a very big feat and I'm so excited about that. And, you know, I'm just doing it for my sister. I really wanted to show people that, you know, you can turn pain into something. There is life after grief. And, you know, we're just moving forward with trying to, you know, share that message with as many people as possible. So that's why I want to use this title as well.
Okay. Appreciate that. Now, you have some guests with you?
I do. My wonderful parents are back there.
Okay, we asked them to stand, please. So we can get them. Good, and thank you for being here. Okay, Ms. Blackshear has a little something to just present to you.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much.
Just agreeing, just to let you know how much we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me.
And once you see you've given all your degrees.
Yes.
Okay? Move it back to Dayton.
Yes, yes.
Got you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks so much. Next, Mr. Steve Gondo from Plain and Neighborhood Development will come to us to the podium.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Clerk. I was so excited to get up here to share the numbers, I almost upstaged Miss Ohio. So I'm glad I waited my turn. That's a really good story. So it's my pleasure to be here as always to give you the monthly update on our progress with the demolition work that our team is doing. So for the month of May, you'll see here that we had 22 completed demolitions. Most of those were in our ARPA program, 16, some still in the general fund and the remnants of our ODOD funding with five there. That is bringing us up to 119 for the year, which I want to point out that if you look at last year with 188, we are at 64% of that goal and we're not even halfway through the year yet. So our pace is picking up and we're on pace to exceed that number, which is where we thought we'd be to meet our overall goal of getting all these done by 2026. When we get into our pile conversation, we started, we ended April with 101. We did remove five in May. We added two, and now we're at 98. I think it's the first time, though, this year that we've been under 100. We're hoping to keep that position. We have an aggressive, more of the pile contract is kind of speeding up, so we should be able to realize that. But it is a little bit of a net gain this month, or last month. Visually, you'll see that a lot of these removals were in our ARPA area. The ARPA pile contract that I referenced, that is spread throughout, not just in our focus areas. And so, and then some of the ongoing ODOD work with the land bank. But this is obviously realizing this work throughout the city. To date, as we layer that on there, again, you'll see especially heavily in our west and northwest areas, but still activity in the northeast and eastern portion of the Structures added to our list, we had 20 added in May. You're starting to see this number come down. I think this is a reflection of kind of going through that housing condition survey, picking up some of the fours and fives that we saw in there. So I'm really hoping this number tapers down and that we kind of get a final, you know, number close to where we are now. But we are still realizing some additional nuisance properties added to that list. Pipeline. So for the last few months, we've had pretty much zeros in this. And I had mentioned that right now, we had, you know, we advanced that work, we're working through the demolitions. We're getting ready now to, you'll see, we're loading up this pipeline. And so the good news is we have 300 properties that have gone through the title report phase, 47 through the asbestos survey, and then 24 through the asbestos remediation. We've just closed out a CDBG bid for 30 properties. We are working, we have currently posted a bid for ARPA for 200, and then we're going to be following up here later this summer with another CDBG for another 30. So 260 additional properties out for bid here probably between now and the end of summer. So again, we're trying to prepare for those properties so by getting the title work, all this stuff ready, so when that contract awards, we can get right into it. So again, how we're managing that pipeline through the execution of the demolitions. The before and afters, so 904 Harvard at the top there, 2154 Fountain, 244 Boyer, and then 120 Conover, that, you know, you're probably want to wear the before, is that was one that was a pile or is some kind of sort of a pile, so there wasn't much above ground when we started, but obviously the completed project on the right. So again, I'm really pleased with the team's work. They're making considerable progress. We're closing, we'll be closing out most of ARPA round one and moving into ARPA round two, which, as I mentioned at previous meetings, we're going to be getting into Southern Dayton View and primarily, and then the North Main Street corridor is our next phase.
Okay.
With that, I will take any comments or questions you might have.
Yeah, it seems like we're going to have quite a movie or video once you finish the before and after with all these projects.
Yes, and thanks to our good friends in Public Affairs, they've been doing a phenomenal job helping us document some of our significant demolitions. And so we really are trying to do a good job of keeping that, you know, the team is doing a great job with the signs, keep that out front so people are aware of the work, that it's ongoing and that we're making progress.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Turner Sloughs.
Thank you, Mayor.
All sorts of questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dungle. Thank you for being here. I just want to commend you and your staff and your leadership. I really appreciate the progress that's being made. And you said by the end of the summer, with the number of bids that we have going through the process, the 300?
Yeah.
Yes. The title report, there should be 260 demolitions that will take place by the end of the summer? That will go out for bid?
We'll be under contract, yeah.
Under contract, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Fairchild.
No. I appreciate the report and the progress and very exciting stuff for our neighbors, so thank you.
Definitely. Thank you.
Likewise. Good update and appreciate it. Keep it coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, just one last thing. I know we, at the very beginning of this process, we were concerned about the aspect of trying to find enough contractors to help with this aggressive project, and you seem to be managing that pretty well.
We are, and we're constant, we're working with, you know, anytime that we have the bid process go up, we're working with the HRC and procurement because each time it's a new opportunity. So if somebody wasn't ready or prepared when we, you know, started this, this is why we broke it up, that there would be points along this path that people could engage as a sub, as a prime, and other parts. So it was never, if you didn't get in in 2022, you're not going to get in. You know, we have specifically broken up that individuals can kind of get in throughout the process. And you'll see that we, as we're breaking it up into smaller contracts, 30, 200, something like the 200, we'll look for multiple, and then we'll kind of spread that 200 out over. So it is, there's numerous opportunities and again, the continuous work with procurement with HRC to make sure that as vendors come into our system, that they're made aware of these opportunities.
Yeah, and just one last word, just on that, I know what you're saying, appreciate that, but the aspect of local and minority contractors, that's all going extremely well for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. So Ms. Blackshear, do we have any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay, Ms. Dixie, any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Yes, Your Honor, we have a lot of really exciting things on our calendar. Before I start the highlights, I would like to note that I would like to pull calendar item number four so that I can do some briefings with all of the commission. This honestly kind of fell through the cracks as we were off for two weeks and on for two weeks. And so I want to be able to provide an update to the commission on the continued and comprehensive work of culture that we're going to be doing in the organization. As far as highlights go, construction contracts on five, six, and seven are some more great investments in the city. John Jurgensen Award of Contract, both for CDBG asphalt resurfacing in our neighborhoods and thoroughfare asphalt resurfacing for our thoroughfares. So that's almost $4.6 million going into our neighborhoods, and we're excited to be bringing these contracts forward. Item number seven is a construction contract with Proflex Construction and Supplies, which is to update playground equipment at Jane Newcombe and College Hill Parks. So that's more park investment that we've been driving over the last few years. D-10 is a development agreement with Caney Aerospace in connection with a regional site selection project. So this was another project that we competed for, and they will be expanding to their office and research and development facility at 201 East First Street. And it's a total project or investment of about $1.7 million. And they will be relocating eight jobs and creating 25 new jobs over the next three years. And they also have community benefit participation with our inclusivity goals of 15% for small business, 10% for minority businesses, 5% for women businesses. So as they work through that project, they'll be working in conjunction with HRC to meet those goals. And then for, I have two items. I'd like to call forward Ken Couch, Director of Human Resources, to highlight items 12 and 13, which are our emergency ordinances addressing the collective bargaining agreement that was, that we completed as of last week. And I want to just, before Ken gives us highlight, give a shout of thanks to Ken and his team for all of the work that they've done in this extended process, but also to Kyle Thomas and his team for really working with and getting us to, you know, a win-win solution here, so.
Okay. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Clerk.
Evening.
Ken Couch, HR Director. Okay, it's been just about a year, but the two ordinances before you tonight concludes our contract negotiations with all five of our bargaining units. So the two before you tonight are with the FOP, each of the units, one officer, one supervisor unit. So by way of just a brief history, we started bargaining with all of our labor groups June of last year. And now it's June of '24, so 365 days later. With the FOP, we started with table negotiations, then we went through mediation slash fact-finding. Your Honor, you're probably familiar from that in your time with the teachers' union.
Yep.
But unfortunately, the parties were unable to agree to terms that we could get both sides to accept. So we scheduled conciliation, which under the Ohio process, that's like final binding arbitration, was scheduled for July 17th. But in interim, we approached the FOP to see if they would be interested in participating in mediation with federal mediation. We've used John Gray, who's a FMCS conciliator mediator, for about a decade. He's been pretty successful with helping the parties reach a conclusion. We met all day on June 13th, and at the end of the day, at about 5:15, we started about 8:30, we arrived at a TA on all outstanding issues for both bargain units. The FOP voted to ratify both TAs for both units on June 19th. So for the terms, the pattern settlement on wages and health care is what the FOP has agreed to. To remind you, that means in 2024, FOP officers will get a 7% increase, in '25, they get a 4% increase, and in '26, they get a 3% increase. This is the same wage increase that every other unit across the city and the bid management non-union employees received for three years. So to give you a little, put this in perspective, effective January 1st of 2026, a top step patrol officer will be at $87,314. As of right now, today, they're at $74,609. We did a remarkable increase to try to keep our qualified officers here in Dayton. Health care pattern, again, no change in premiums for '24 and '25. Then in '26, the FOP, along with everybody else in the city, will transition to a four-tier health insurance plan, where in '26, a single plan will cost $120 a month. An employee plus child or children will cost $204 a month. Employee plus a spouse or partner will be $240 a month, and a family plan will be $360 a month. By way of comparison, for '24 and '25, it's $88 a month for a single, and all other pay $240. So we've tethered out a little bit so that the middle groups don't overly subsidize the singles and the family plan. Now, we also agreed on two additional changes to address our recruitment and retention issues in the Dayton Police Department. Now, our department, like many across the country, have dealt with retention recruitment issues since the year of COVID and George Floyd. Every police department across this country is struggling to recruit and retain qualified officers. So we took a couple steps on our own to try to address this. We started doing two police recruit classes this year rather than one. It's almost like a continued recruitment. So if you apply to be a Dayton police officer and you pass all of our qualifications and background, I can tell you for sure you're going to the academy. And we also added a lateral hiring process to supplement the recruit class, not to replace. So if we put 20 officers in a recruit class and only 15 graduate, we try to hire laterals from the surrounding communities to plug those holes. So starting this year, the parties agreed to the two additional changes I mentioned. First, for 2024, for this year, our officers are going to receive a 1% payment upon successful completion of their firearm certification. This payment increases to 1.5% for '25 and then tops out at 2% for 2026. Second, we reduced the officer's pay steps from steps to five steps, dropping the first two steps. So now when a police recruit graduates in the sworn in, they'll start at what used to be step four. And starting in this year, that's going to be, step four would be $71,600. And they graduate the academy making $55,400. But we wanted to put the money where we needed it most. It's our younger, less senior officers who tend to want to leave, so we want them to stay. We want to tell them that they're important to us, so we want to pay them accordingly. Now, the important part is those two additional changes do not trigger our Me Too provisions. You've probably heard me talk about that before.
Right.
We were very careful in drafting the Me Too provisions that DPSU and the IFF agreed to. Me Too provisions only apply to base wage increases and the equity adjustment. And it's the same for the FOP as everybody else, so there's no Me Too trigger. And I'd like to echo what Shelley said. I'd like to thank the FOP, both the leadership and the membership for working with us and sticking with us as we resolve the contract for the next three years.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions or thoughts?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want, like to commend Mr. Couch and his team for their leadership. Thank you, sir. And as well, echo your comments and your gratitude and appreciation to the FOP leadership and membership. So kudos to the city administration staff and the entire team. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Fairchild?
Yeah, a couple things. Congratulations on the Caney Aerospace selection of Dayton. That's a big win for the city, so thank you, City Manager and your staff. Also, wanted to highlight, you didn't highlight, but I wanted to highlight the contribution from Premier for the paramedicine program. I think that's an incredible program and benefit to our, it's a mutual beneficial, right? It's for the citizens who need it, but also for our hospitals in the area, so it was glad to see that. And then I'd like to echo your comments to appreciation for Mr. Couch and his team and Kyle Thomas and his team for getting this contract done. I know that this was something that was keeping me up at night, so I'm sure that it was keeping others up at night as well. But, you know, we value our police officers and I regret that it took such a hard path to get to this resolution, but I'm glad we got to, one, this resolution prior to the conciliation.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners.
Just congratulations for your work. I know it was a difficult process, a long process, but good job.
Thank you. Yeah, again, long process. Clearly understand some of the nuances associated with that and some of the adjustments, compacting years to give a larger salary increase to those individuals starting off, because it's difficult trying to find policemen and recruit policemen and get them to come to your city and working in the department across the nation, as you mentioned before. So this is very, very, very good work. So again, thank you so much. Thank you.
The last item I'd like to highlight, Mayor, is ordinance number 32101-24, which is the ordinance to levy a motor vehicle license tax. And I'd like to call forward Abby Patel Jones to just provide a quick overview of this ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and Clerk.
Evening.
As City Manager mentioned, I'm going to provide you a brief update on the permissive tax. What is in front of you, it talks about what is this additional permissive tax. So just to give you a little bit of history, in Ohio, permissive motor vehicle tax increase has been in effect since 1967. In the ORC, Chapter 4504, permissive tax is defined as the local motor vehicle license tax, which can be levied by counties, municipalities, and/or townships on vehicle registration. The first vehicle registration tax was $5, but with any, any cost increases, there has been an increase over time, with each increase being an additional $5. So the current permissive tax is $25 per registration in the city of Dayton. In 2019, House Bill 62 raised the current maximum permissive tax for registration in any single taxing district to $30 per registration. If approved, this $5 tax would apply to vehicle registrations in Dayton starting on January 1st, 2025. With the current increase, the most recent increase that occurred in 2019, nine of the 22 municipalities and three of the 12 townships in Montgomery County have implemented this most recent increase. So how much revenue would be generated from this additional levy? With little over 111,000 vehicles registered in Dayton last year, the new levy would generate approximately $529,000 in additional funding. How is permissive tax used? The permissive tax revenue is used to maintain the city's 507 thoroughfare lane miles, which includes planning, imp- most recent increase. So how much revenue would be generated from this additional levy? With little over 111,000 vehicles registered in Dayton last year, the new levy would generate approximately $529,000 in additional funding. How is permissive tax used? The permissive tax revenue is used to maintain the city's 507 thoroughfare lane miles, which includes planning, improving, and repairing of public roads and streets. Annually, permissive tax is combined with gas tax revenue to provide funding for roadway maintenance and repairs. Some of the examples of roadway maintenance are de-icing that we experience in the winter months, street sweeping, and purchasing of equipment needed for the roadway maintenance activities. The funding is also used for additional road resurfacing, crack sealing, and pothole repairing program, as well as upgrading road striping and providing maintenance of traffic signal signs. So if approved, this additional funding would allow the city to further address its ongoing continuous need for roadway maintenance and roadway infrastructure improvement projects. With that, I will take any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Commissioner Turner-Sloss, questions?
No, I don't have any. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Ms. Patel Jones.
Commissioner Fairchild?
No, I appreciate the update. Thank you very much.
I'm good, too.
We're good? We're all good?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on City Manager's recommendations?
Non-calender, I don't, Your Honor.
All right. Commissioners, may I have a motion there? Oh, no. First of all, comments on City Manager's recommendations.
I don't have any.
Don't have any?
I have any.
I made mine, but I made mine in reference to the police contract. But there's one other comment I wanted to make, and that was, Mr. Crouch had said that since George Floyd, we'd had trouble recruiting police. It actually predates George Floyd, and there are articles in the police chief around anticipating the slew of retirements that were coming, and that they were having recruitments even prior to that. Certainly, that has played a factor, as well as COVID and the tightening workforce as a whole. So we've got big challenges.
Multiple issues.
And so I look forward to working with our FOP partners on addressing that issue going forward. But that's, it's a broader issue than just us and the FOP. I mean, it's a community issue, and it's a broader issue, so.
Right. Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
I'm good.
Good. Okay. May I have a motion then to approve the City Manager's recommendations?
I move to approve the City Manager's recommendations.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, so it's been probably moved and seconded to approve the City Manager's recommendations. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. Okay. Legislation, please, Ms. Blackshear.
First reading emergency ordinance number 32102-24, accepting a proposed collective bargaining agreement with the officer's unit of the Fraternal Order of Police, John C. Post-Lodge Number 44, authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement and declaring an emergency.
Your Honor, being declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of emergency ordinance number 32102-24.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved and seconded to declare ordinance number 321- excuse me, 32102-24 as emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Second reading emergency ordinance number 32102-24, accepting a proposed collective bargaining agreement with the officer's unit of the Fraternal Order of Police, John C. Post-Lodge Number 44, authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement. Mayor Mims?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
First reading emergency ordinance number 32103-24, accepting a proposed collective bargaining agreement with the supervisor's unit of the Fraternal Order of Police, John C. Post-Lodge Number 44, authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement and declaring an emergency.
Having been declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of ordinance number 32103-24.
Second.
Okay, so it's been probably moved and seconded to have ordinance number 32103-24 as emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay.
Second reading emergency ordinance number 32103-24, accepting a proposed collective bargaining agreement with the supervisor's unit of the Fraternal Order of Police, John C. Post-Lodge Number 44, authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement. Mayor Mims?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
First reading emergency resolution number 6806-24, ratifying the acceptance of a technology grant award from the Ohio Supreme Court in the amount of $134,845.06 and declaring an emergency.
Your Honor, being declared as an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of emergency resolution number 6806-24.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, so it's been probably moved and seconded to declare resolution number 6806-24 as emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Second reading emergency resolution number 6806-24, ratifying the acceptance of a technology grant award from the Ohio Supreme Court in the amount of $134,845.06. Mayor Mims?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
Second reading ordinance number 32101-24, levying a motor vehicle license tax pursuant to Ohio Revised Section 4504.173. Mayor Mims?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
Second reading resolution number 6804-24, authorizing the city manager to accept federal fiscal years 2025 and 2026, federal aviation administration airport improvement project grants from the United States Department of Transportation for airport improvement projects at the James M. Cox Dayton International Airport and Dayton Wright Brothers Airport on behalf of the city of Dayton in an amount not to exceed $25 million and zero cents. Mayor Mims?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
That's all, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
Yes, Your Honor, there are two citizens who have registered. I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on. You'll have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience in attendance, please be mindful, this is a business meeting, and we kindly request that you refrain from any hand clapping, finger snapping, and conversation that will prevent the city commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I call to the podium Kevin Keller.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and the audience.
Good evening.
And Ms. Ohio.
Woo-hoo.
I'd like to open up-
Name an address for that.
That's right. Haven't been there in a couple weeks. My name's Kevin Keller, 3922 East Third Street, Dayton, Ohio. I'd like to open up by asking, why do we approve the absence of one of the commission members? I've always wondered that, ever since it started coming here. What happens if you don't approve it? Is it like an excuse to get out of school? Also, police duties and thank yous. I don't think we ever can thank our police fire and EMTs enough to keep us safe, keep this city vibrant and moving. One thing, question I do have is, it just seems that, I'm not sure if it's in our city exclusively, but the reaction from law enforcement, from fire departments, when there's a house fire, especially if it's a abandoned house, the honing we have in some of the city streets, flying up and down the intersections, the demonstrates, the demos of all these burned-out houses, we're spending a lot of money on that. It'd be kind of neat if we turned some of these vacant properties after the cities finds a way to cede them, because we're paying for the demolition, we're paying for the fire. We ought to just be able to seize that property and put a community garden there. And as far as rain, street maintenance, I live on a street, East Third Street at Quentin, where during heavy rain, we just had one. Because the roads are crowned so deeply, there's no room for the water to go in the storm drain, because they paved over it so many times, it seems like they don't grade enough off to create good-sized pavement, and there's hardly any room to go down in the drains, and the water bypasses the drain, and by the time it gets to the end of the street, it's a river. Got a real concern with that. And who's going to reseed the grass after all these gas lines are replaced in the sidewalks? Right now, I've got corn growing in my front yard because of what they put down. I hope they do a better job, because, you know, I mean, the city will fight us if we don't mow our lawns so it can look nice and pretty. It would be nice that when we have these reseeded, there's quality seeds, so we can have our lawns look nice. And in aviation, I was hoping to have, one more thing on the police, car chasing and stolen cars. We seem to be coming in an all-time high of not only stolen cars, but taking them on a ride, like the ones we had recently. It's getting a little scary. And it seems like, why can't we up the ante on the punishment for stealing a car, honing, and all that kind of stuff? The third thing I have that I'd like to share is, who's Kearney Aviation, or Caney Aviation, or Caney Aerospace? I'd really like to hear about that. I did a little read for the meeting, and I don't get a lot coming up in Dayton, especially their website doesn't say anything about coming to Dayton. And I thank you, folks, very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Mayor and Commissioners.
Name an address, please.
Charles Scandrick, 257 Huron Avenue.
You may be.
All right. What I'm here for today is to ask the Commissioners and the Mayor to, not to take up much of your time, speaking about issues that's going on in the Westwood community. I moved back here from Seattle, Washington, and I was told that, well, I was doing technical assistance for minority women-owned businesses. I came back here, and I wanted to take up that same venture. The mayor was working for the school system, I don't know if you remember this at that time, and he gave me one of my biggest contracts to do the golf outing that he was doing, so thank you for that. But what I'm here for today is, I don't want the city to be able to say that they did not know some things that's current in the Westwood community. And one of them has to do with parking. We have a gentleman there who had families who'd been living there for 60 years and 30 years. He's there with commercial trucks, three commercial trucks, two cars, and a pickup truck. And once again, I don't want to take up much of your time here, but I do want to know who I need to speak with to get this situation resolved, because he's bullying, he had three neighbors who done called the police at least four times. I took him to protective order, I took him to the court for a protective order, and he continues to make an effort to provoke, intimidate neighbors who've been living there for 60 and 30 years. He's just been living there for two years. In my, in our presentation to the courts, he told the courts, he's just been out of jail for two years, and he don't want, he said this in front of the judge, I don't want anyone telling me what to do. So you can't compromise with this guy. And it's all about parking. He got six vehicles that he played musical vehicles with in order to prevent us from parking in front of our homes. And like I said, that's time-consuming, and I want to put it on the Commissioners now. But I do want to burden the commission to look into this situation and come up with some real possibilities that can avoid something that's getting ready to occur. It's getting ready to occur. We had one gentleman who, we start putting, it started with him. We would leave him room because the EMTs would come and get him regularly. He started parking in that spot. And he just filtered on down to every neighbor living close to him. Just the other day, we had a neighbor who had a survey deed. He parks in a parking lot, the police come, he chased the police off, and tell the police that's his driveway. I mean, it's not his driveway. So my point being, we do need for the city of Dayton to allow me to have someone that I can go speak with, and we start resolving this issue.
Okay. Please stay after the meeting, we'll have a member of staff to get with you to get some more information.
Okay. Also, I got a letter. I'll give it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
That is all, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Blackshear, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, Your Honor. Due to the Fourth of July Holiday Lights and Flight Fireworks Show next Wednesday evening, next week's evening commission meeting will be held at 8:30 a.m. instead of 6 o'clock in order for everyone to attend the fireworks presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Dixie, any closing comments?
Yes, Your Honor, I just want to ask Mr. Kendrick to meet with Lieutenant Colonel Henderson here from the Police Department after the meeting, so he can get the information and get you a copy.
Scandrick?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's all I have, Your Honor.
That's it? Okay. Commissioners, closing comments? Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Just would like to thank Ms. Hudson, Ms. Ohio. Again, congratulations. Thank you for being here, as well as your parents. It's good to see you both. And I will add that they live in the Mount Vernon neighborhood, if I'm not mistaken. So it's good to see you all. Again, I wanted to commend Mr. Steve Donnell and his entire staff. Thank you very much for your leadership and the great work that you're doing, as well as Ms. Patel Jones, thank you for your presentation. Mr. Crouch, thank you for the work that you're doing, as well as your entire team and the negotiations with the FOP and their leadership and membership. And then, Mr. Keller, thank you, as always, for being here and raising your concerns and your comments. I will encourage you to contact Miller Pipeline. They are, in fact, the contractor that is servicing all of the gas lines. And if you contact them at 937-506-8837, again, that's 937-506-8837, and just let them know the location, the property address, and I'm sure they will come out and address that reseeding issue for you in regards to the, to your area, to your property. And then in regards to the issues with speeding and honing, from my understanding, understanding, excuse me, and the mayor can correct me on this, but I believe the mayor, some time ago, a couple months ago, you testified, and there's legislation that you're working with.
Still waiting on passage.
Yes, still working on passage. So things are in the turn, if you will, the turn, to be resolved in that, in that area. And Mr. Scandrick, it's good to see you as well, sir. Thank you for being here and raising your concerns. And Ms. Dixie has already addressed your concerns in terms of directing you to the Assistant Chief to address your concerns. So again, thank you for being here and raising your concerns. And look forward to seeing everyone at Kettering Field next week for the fireworks. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Welcome back, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Turner-Sloss, for those words, and you recognizing everyone who came, and I echo those comments. To our staff, and particularly Director Gil Turner, the airshow was a great success. I had a, I only got there for a brief time because of my schedule this time. I got there at the best time, Saturday, right before the Blue Angels flew. Got to see the Blue Angels, remarkable performance, it's always great. And Mr. Keller, looking across the way, I could see those two Sierra Nevada hangars there. So, you know, progress is happening now at the airport. So congratulations on all accounts at the airport, and that's what's happening there. Encourage people to come out next Wednesday to Kettering Field for the fireworks. You know, we moved it last year and ended up being a great venue, it's the last space for families to come and spread out. Hopefully, the weather will be conducive and, you know, plan to come early, bring a picnic, enjoy the time. So a great way for us to build community. And Mr. Keller, also, I wanted to say, it does seem perfunctory when we do the acknowledgements, we give the approval of the absences. But if you go into charter, I don't know how many it is, I believe it might be six, if you have six unexcused absences, you can be removed. So there is a reason we do it. Now, the good news is-
It's five.
What?
It's five.
Five? The good news is, we never have to go into charter because we have responsible Commissioners who actually do merit having their excuse, their absences excused because they're traveling.
Is that like detention?
What's that?
Is that like detention?
You guys can talk after.
Yeah. But there is a reason, I wanted to let folks know, there is a reason why we do the approval of the absences. So those are all my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Well, you took my comment. I did want to just compliment your work- I did want to just compliment airport staff and city staff in general on the great 50th anniversary of the Dayton airshow. And thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to, in your stead, do the welcoming for that on Saturday. So, that was wonderful. I don't think I've ever seen that many people at the airshow, but it was a really good event. And thanks to our partners, CenterPoint Energy, and of course Kroger Corporation, for their great sponsorship of that event. Hopefully, we'll do another 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you. So, first, I want to make sure that I don't forget this, so I've got this number one on my list. My granddaughter, Chase Morrow, today is her 16th birthday.
Wow.
So, I've already sang happy birthday to her. It's been a habit of mine, tradition in the family, if you will, that I would call and sing happy birthday to all my relatives on their birthday. And I recently have had to make that optional, and so she's the only one that would accept my singing at this point in time, right now. But, again, I really do appreciate all those great years of being a Dayton resident and city of Dayton, and moving along, taking advantage of all the opportunities that we have as well. Next, I'd like to recognize Vice President of School Board, Ms. Karen Wick, in the back. Thank you for being here. I certainly appreciate that. And then, also like to thank my colleagues and the staff, and those who have supported me as I've gone through a couple of challenging surgeries over the last several weeks. Some of you may have seen me walking a little gingerly, and some of you may have seen me not walking at all, okay? Because I had two complete knee replacement surgeries, and thanks to the VA, I guess it's my reward for crawling around three years, five months in a day in the military. But I certainly do appreciate all the great work that the Dayton Veterans Administration do for the veterans in this area. Just top-notch work. They treat everyone there as if they are a hero, and they have done such a great job in terms of making sure that all the needs are met, providing all the follow-up surgery, all the medicine, delivering pain medicine, which we needed a lot, okay? But just tremendous, tremendous work. And again, going back to staff, who, my Commissioners, taken the opportunity to fill in for me when I was absent. And again, I didn't miss more than five meetings, okay? And so, they excuse all those as necessary. I can't begin to thank you so much, or too much, for all the work that you've done. And I do have to stop right now before I break down into tears. I could not have done this, seriously, without the staff. I should have done this probably 10 years ago. The surgeons and doctors said I was working on bone-on-bone and going through that process, so it was extremely painful as I carried out some of the functions that we were performing on a day-to-day basis. But working for the 140,000 people that we have in the city of Dayton is much worth it, and so, again, it's still a bit of honor and a pleasure to do this work. So, again, thank all of you for picking up my slack. And before we leave, I would think it would be a great honor for this commission to have a picture with Ms. America, Ms. Ohio.
Upgrading.
I'm saying, Ms. America, I'm being a little bit.
You're claiming.
So, Ms. Ohio, so if you would mind blessing us with your presence, we'll make sure we do that before you leave today. So, with no further business to come before this commission, this meeting is adjourned.